Call to order the March 5th meeting of City Council. Welcome, everyone. We've had a productive meeting earlier with some comments that really, people have been talking about on City Council, so I'd like to, again, call us to order and ask, pledge allegiance to the flag. Mayor Pro Tem Forrest Fleming will lead us in the pledge of flag. If you'll please stand.
Join with me if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated.
I'd like to call Pastor Wanda Neely from the First Presbyterian Church to lead us in an invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we invoke your presence for this meeting of individuals willing to be servants of the people for this beautiful city of Morganton. Help them to do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and promote the general welfare of our community. Especially tonight, we give thanks for those who have served this city in public safety, William Trent Devaney; in the finance department, Lamina Duckworth; and on the line with the electric department, Jimmy York. Give them blessed days now in their retirement. We thank you also for the 20 years of survey work of Mark Huffman in development and design. Give him continued success with his work. God, we are the beneficiaries in this city of the foresight, the vision, and the sacrifices of those who came before us. Guide these leaders now as they make decisions for responsible use of funding, for caring and sound alternatives for our environment, and for visionary master plans for recreation and for the downtown. Bless their work for the good of all. Amen.
Thank you, Wanda, so much for being here. I'd like to introduce the council to my far right, Wendy Cato, councilwoman. Forrest Fleming, Mayor Pro Tem. Louis Vina, our city attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, mayor. Sally Sandy, our city manager. Sidney Simmons, I'm sorry, Sidney. Sidney Simmons, council. Chris Hawkins, you'll get me later. Chris Hawkins, city council. Kelly Russell, our recording secretary. And Joy Hearn Guzman, who is our interpreter for the deaf community tonight. Thank you so much. We'll get through this, council, I promise. For retire resolutions tonight, we have, first one is for William Trent Devaney. I'm going to ask Forrest Fleming if he'll actually present it, and I'll read the resolution. Whereas William Trent Devaney was employed by the city of Morganton as public safety officer trainee in the public safety department on February 20th, 1989, promoted to public safety officer on July 10th, 1989, promoted to sergeant on March 7th, 1989, promoted to captain on June 21st, 2007, transferred from platoon captain to captain CID evidence. And whereas William Trent Devaney has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the public safety department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 30 years and one month. And whereas William Trent Devaney retired from the city of Morganton as captain CID evidence of public safety department on February 1st, 2018. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of William Trent Devaney and express our appreciation for their job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to William Trent Devaney adopted this 5th day of February, 2018. Ronnie Thompson, mayor. Sally Sandy, city clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So move.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll ask.
I move to declare surplus weapon Glock 22, General IV, serial number XHY509, and fire helmet Paul Conway, serial number LH00132781. Be declared surplus, sold for $1, and presenting to retired public safety Captain Devaney.
Have a motion to have a second.
And, Madam Clerk.
We have a second. We have the exchange of dollars. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Forrest Fleming, would you make a presentation?
Captain Devaney, we're too kind of fleshed. And I wish you the very best, and I know we all got there and want to retire. This is too early, but we graduated. We're going to keep the best.
Good time getting there. I don't want to miss the work per se, but I do miss the people and seeing them every day. It's a pleasure to work with them. It's a great place to work, actually, so I've had a good time.
Thank you for your service.
To wish you well.
Yes, sir?
See, like every other month, we're up here with someone retiring. Thirty years of service, we cannot replace that. It's valuable experience, but he's getting to retire and get to enjoy his next chapter of his life. And it's been a pleasure working with you, Trent, all these years. And thank you for your dedication to the public safety and the citizens of Morganton. And on behalf of public safety and the city of Morganton, I present you with your duty firearm.
Right.
Congratulations.
And from one captain to another, I would like to present you with your fire helmet.
Thank you, John. Tell you what, glad he's there to take over making coffee.
We're missing for that. Thank you.
And Trent, for the record, I brought my dollar to buy that tonight, but Councilman Fleming trumped me. And that's okay.
We have another resolution honoring Lamina Duckworth. Whereas Lamina L. Duckworth was employed by the city of Morganton as dispatcher in the public safety department on November 7th, 1990, transferred to record clerk in the public safety department on January 4th, 1994, promoted to deputy tax collector in the finance department on December 22nd, 1997, promoted to assistant finance director on February 4th, 2000, transferred to tax collector on January 29th, 2004, promoted to customer service manager on January 2nd, 2013. And whereas Lamina L. Duckworth has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the public safety and finance departments and has given of her time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 28 years and six months. And whereas Lamina L. Duckworth retired from the city of Morganton as customer service manager of the finance department on March 1st, 2018, whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Lamina L. Duckworth and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Lamina L. Duckworth adopted this 5th day of March, 2018. Ronnie Thompson, mayor. Sally Sandy, clerk. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Send the.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. I ask Councilman Sidney Simmons to make that presentation.
Thank you.
Lamina, you always have a smile on your face.
No, and I do really now.
What my question was going to be, the day you told me you were going to retire, the smile got bigger. Is there a reason for that? Now I'm going to let you get up there and you can give us a reason for it.
I thank you all for 30 years. I've gained a lot. I know that the city is so lucky to have Sally as a manager and a wonderful council. And something to look forward to to retirement, six Saturdays and one Sunday, and it can be casual day every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Lamina. Thank you. We also have a resolution honoring Jimmy R. York, who is retiring from our electric department. That resolution reads, whereas Jimmy R. York was employed by the city of Morganton as line 1-1 in the electric operations department on July 6th, 1998, changed to line technician 1 on July 1, 2004. And whereas Jimmy R. York has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the electric department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 29 years and one month. And whereas Jimmy R. York retired from the city of Morganton as line technician 1 of the electric department on March 1, 2018. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to recognize the contributions of Jimmy York and express our appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Jimmy R. York adopted this 5th day of March, 2018. Ronnie Thompson, mayor. Sally Sandy, city clerk. I need a motion to accept that resolution.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Jimmy cannot be with us. We'll make that presentation at a later time. We also have a service pin for Mark Huffman, the development and design department. I'm going to ask Chris if he'll come forward, please. Hawkins, and make that presentation. We try to recognize our employees for years of service at City Council, and we try to recognize those on 20, 25, and 30-year intervals. So, Chris Hawkins, if you make that presentation.
Absolutely, Mark. It's my honor to present you with this service pin for 20 years of loyal service, and we hope many, many more.
Yes, thank you very much, sir.
Mark, thanks, Senator. Next, under public advocacy, we have an Etta Baker Week update. I'm going to call on Jim Smith. If he would come forward to the microphone and give us an update about the Etta Baker Week, please.
We received a grant this past year from the Burke Arts Council to have a local artist from Asheville come and be in 10 of our 12 elementary schools. And we did that. The third week of February, we reached over 950 3rd graders, from my understanding. And here's a picture at Drexel Elementary School with the 3rd graders there. Laura Blackley was the artist that came that performed songs by Etta Baker, talked about the Piedmont Blues. You also see my comma staff down there helping set up sound. And it was a good week for all. It keeps the, kind of, the legacy alive of Etta Baker. And we claim her, you know, right here because she's in Morganton. We have our wonderful statue over at comma. We'll continue this program as grants come in, as we write those each year, the third week in February. And we're excited about that. It also connects the city to the school system, and it also brings patrons into comma to see Etta's memorial that we have, as well as her statue. And it is a requirement for the North Carolina standards in their schools that 3rd graders study a local artist. There's not many counties in North Carolina that can say that their city sends a booklet, a lesson plan, and a local artist to help implement those state standards. So I thank you for letting me share this evening.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Under other public advocacy issues, upcoming events at comma, the Lily Kai Chinese Dance Company will be there Saturday, March 10th, at 7:30. The Benjamin F. Long lecture will be Monday, March 19th, at 7:00 p.m. Stomp, S-T-O-M-P, will be on Friday, March 23rd, at 7:30. The ACC Chili Cook-Off is Thursday, March 8th, from 11:00 to 1:30 at the Morganton Community House. It's going back home with the community house where it was. Our Easter Egg Hunt will be Saturday, March 24th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Catawba River Soccer Complex. And I was notified today that March 30th will be a dig day for Exploring Jorora Foundation. On March 30th, there'll be a, the dig will start again with our Exploring Jorora Foundation. Next on the agenda is our North Carolina Municipal Power Agency, number one. Sally?
Yes, I need to report that the rate committee for that group is starting meetings this week. They're going to be looking at setting rates for next budget year.
Any other business from them?
That's it.
Next is the consent agenda. I believe we have six items. Sally, if you'll cover those, please.
We do. Those items include minutes from the regular meeting held on February 5th, and also a special meeting that occurred that same day for the soccer complex expansion grant process, a budget amendment to receive $14,499 from insurance proceeds for public safety, the approval of the urban archery season for 2018-19 that will run from mid-January to mid-February, the approval of the 2018 downtown calendar of events that sets up the downtown activities that will occur on the courthouse and surrounding streets, the ordinance that goes along with that, that the state requires us to do for the temporary closures of certain state highways for city-sponsored events in downtown, and then also the ever-popular water and sewer line construction and water and sewer material specifications. It's something that we adopt each year.
Do any members of City Council wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Not to have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Under new business, we need to consider entering into a contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments to administer a building reuse grant for the company, a caring alternative and associated budget amendments. Sally?
Yes. You had allowed the staff to apply for this building reuse grant. It is for a caring alternative, which is the work going on next door in the One North Square Building. We have been successful, and the state has awarded us $230,000 for that. It requires an $11,500 administration fee. That will be shared equally between the city and the county. So this is setting up the budget for that, and that is $241,500. And also for contracting with Western Piedmont Council of Governments to provide the administration on that grant.
We'll need two motions. I'll entertain the first motion, please.
Motion to approve the contract to Western Piedmont Community, WBCOG, to administer a caring alternative grant for $11,500 and a budget amendment to receive half the administration costs from Burke County.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any not approved, the motion will pass. Okay. We had an active shooting class early, and it's gotten everybody up here.
I think it does.
No doubt.
No doubt. No doubt. Okay, we have, we need another motion, please, for the funds.
Motion to approve a project budget ordinance in the amount of $230,000 to appropriate funds for a building reuse grant for a caring alternative.
I have a motion to have a second. Forrest, is a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And that grant is based on job creation as required by the state. And we love to throw in all those anachronisms just to get everybody.
I know what they mean. I just couldn't say it tonight.
Next on the agenda is consideration of adoption of the recreation master plan. Sally?
So for the last year, we have been working on updates to two really large master plans. The first one we're going to talk about tonight is the recreation master plan. At our February 23rd workshop, you all got the final presentation of that master plan and the recommendations that are coming to the city for us to set a map, a roadmap, if you will, for what we're going to try to take on and accomplish in recreation for the next 10 to 15 years. There was a ton of public participation in this process. Many opportunities you're seeing on the screen, an example of a proposed redevelopment of Bethel Park that came out as a part of this master plan. This was presented this way during the presentation of the master plan. We are excited about the opportunities in here. I need to thank all of the steering committee members who participated in this process, who attended quite a few meetings. Need to thank the citizens in general for all the meetings, all the surveys they took, for the questions they asked, for the questions they answered, for taking part in two different workshops, and for caring about what happens in recreation in this community. Want to let everybody know, the PowerPoint presentations from the workshop will be posted to the city website. Digital versions of the final plan will also be there. We want to keep the excitement going, and we want people to get to see what's in that plan. Once we have it, implementation will start. And with every day moving forward, we'll be looking for the partners and looking for the pieces of this at the council's direction that we want to try to accomplish.
Do I have a motion to adopt the recreation master plan as presented?
Motion to adopt the recreation master plan as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sally, I just wanted to make sure I understand some of the statistics, I guess, I got from the recreation department. Over 17 clubs, four aquatic programs, five adult sports leagues, seven youth programs. Sports program are supported by recreation. 17,000 people use the greenway each month. And we've got a tremendous, tremendous park system, I think twice the size that a normal city would have, that many parks.
A city our size, absolutely. And those 17,000 people are not just Morganton residents. Those are county residents and visitors. And that is an awesome thing that we provide to all the people around us so they can enjoy that.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of the adoption of the downtown master plan. Sally?
Ditto what I just said, except put downtown in the recreation spot. But actually, again, a very public process, lots of participation. And that participation came from the broader community, from property owners in downtown, from business owners in downtown, from people interested in wanting to live in downtown, from people outside of our community that want to invest in downtown. And so we're really grateful for the participation from the steering committee and the citizens and the general public. Once again, a plan, take us through the next 10 to 15 years. The last one served us very well. The last one generated opportunities for us to seek partnerships and help in doing all kinds of things. We're sitting in a product of the last downtown redevelopment plan, the two together. The movie theater came out of that, restaurants in downtown. And now we're looking at adding more restaurants, hopefully adding more retail, and definitely some residential. So we're excited about the plan. Time to go to work on that one, too, identify partners, funding partners, and participation partners and support partners for that plan.
Do I have a motion concerning the adoption of the downtown master?
I move to adopt the downtown master plan as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on it, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I know that possibly when this master plan begins to unfold and things are being done, that as we see the 10 projected items come to fruition, that a lot of folks may, or some folks may feel that it's a bit broad and cumbersome. And there might be some criticism. But I'd like to point out to you that a city the size of Morganton has one of two things to do. You either have creative new ideas and you move forward, or you stand still or move backwards. And I believe that if we don't move forward and continue to move forward with innovative new ideas, then our city's going to die. And that's certainly something that we don't want to see. So I support this plan 100%.
Thank you, Forrest. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is the consideration of agreement between NC DOT and the city of Morganton concerning the downtown Greenway Connector project. Sally?
This is a perfect thing to talk about right now, because we are now talking about an agreement where downtown meets recreation and recreation meets downtown, which is kind of what we spent the last year talking about. So for a couple of years now, we have been working on a federal grant that we have been awarded to help us fund a greenway connector between Green Street that would run all the way through the property. And you're looking at, on the screen, you see the proposed plan and the proposed path that this may take. Run down behind, if you will, Green Street, come up and around by Mountain View Rec Center, by the swimming pool, by the new Martin Luther King Park that is going to be completed soon, by the new school, Mountain View School, which is being constructed there, cross the bypass, and figure in and dovetail in to what we already have happening at Catawba Meadows, and tie to the existing greenway that runs through Catawba Meadows. An awesome opportunity that would allow our residents, our visitors, our citizens to then bike and/or walk, and I guess rollerskate, inline blades, whatever they choose to do, cross over. You can go from downtown to Catawba Meadows and back. And that is something that we've been working on for some time. The project is $1.6 million, $1,668, $750, to be exact. The grant for that, that we have been awarded, is $1,350,000.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And the remainder of that, the $333,000, are city dollars that are going into that. In order for us to do this, because these are federal dollars, they come through the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And it is a very complicated process, which is why it is taking us several years. The other delay is when the Mountain View School project came on the scene, we asked to pull back, to not move forward, to redesign, so that it would work in conjunction with that project, and everybody could be better served. This is the agreement we need to put in place so we can work with DOT through the administration of this and get started on the project.
Okay. I need a motion, please.
Motion to adopt and approve the agreement between North Carolina Department of Transportation and the city of Morganton for the administration of city of Morganton funds and federal funds to construct the downtown Greenway Connector.
Have a motion and a second. Thank you, Sidney. Any questions from City Council? One question I have, Sally. At Bouchelle Street, if Chad will put the map back up, please, on the screen. Down at Bouchelle Street, will that be a light? I know we've tried to work with DOT, NC DOT, to try and get a light, not only for the greenway, but also for the new school down there. They're going to need us with the school buses and traffic down there. Is that sort of still in the plans?
That is something that, now that the school is in the picture, we are going to be able to accomplish. And the school is now spearheading that with their project, but of course we are supporting those efforts. So that will be a signalized crossing. You're going to see some improvements to that entire end of Bouchelle Street. There's going to be a turn lane added in there so that as the cars are approaching the school and leaving the school, that will be a fully pedestrian accessible signal. I am correct in that, right? They're shaking their heads. So that it will be easier to cross that road.
I understand the school has tried its best to put two inbound lanes for traffic to make sure the traffic doesn't back up onto the bypass, so.
They do. And how they are developing their site allows stacking as well on their site.
Okay, great. We have a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of an ordinance to defectuate Article E, Chapter 2 of Part 9 of the Code of Ordinances as to dilapidated properties at 314 Fletcher Street. I believe, Louis, you're going to take that, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's our standard strange-sounding title for determining that there is property that the city needs to take action on. 314 Fletcher Street is a mobile home park near the end of Fletcher Street, which of course is a dead end. You will be seeing some pictures. There are two, there are about eight or 10 mobile homes in all. Those on lots seven and eight are the two that you have pictures of and are the two that are in question here. They are obviously abandoned, unoccupied. One is severely the two that are in question here. They are obviously abandoned, unoccupied. One is severely dilapidated, and the other, as you can see, is largely burned out. The building inspector has, of course, visited the property, made those determinations of their condition, notified the owner of the property, and conducted, as is required, a hearing, which he did in January. And as a result of that hearing, Mike issued an order finding that the two mobile homes are, as I guess is, probably didn't require an expert building inspector to determine, are unsafe for human habitation, and directing the owner to demolish and remove them. That was, order was issued January 25. More than a month has passed. He was given 30 days. More than a month has passed. Obviously, nothing has been done. And therefore, Mike, as building inspector, has asked for the council to act. As you will recall, our ordinance requires that before the building inspector may proceed to remove the structures with city forces, we have to get your ordinance and order, or order in the form of an ordinance, from City Council. And that is what is being sought. It is our standard form of ordinance and order. It gives the owner one last chance for 30 days to do the removal. If not, it authorizes the building inspector and other city staff to proceed. And there's no particular deadline. I think the deadline is a year. Depending on availability of funding and other priorities, it's possible that it may take several months before that happens.
I need a motion from council, please.
I move to adopt an ordinance and order directing the building inspector to effectuate the purposes of Article E of Chapter 2 of Part 9 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Morganton regarding two abandoned and dilapidated mobile homes on Lot 7 and 8 of the Mobile Home Park at 314 Fletcher Street.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Do I have a second? I'd like to call Mike to the microphone, please, if he would, and give us, I think the city attorney gave us a pretty good history. Mike, you want to add anything? Or you've seen a lot of stuff in our city. Help me with this.
That pretty much covers it. We've got history from, on the lot number seven, that's been going on since about 2015. Ongoing discussions with the owner, it's been several years now of that, just on that one unit, to make it habitable. He came in and in September, I think it was, and actually signed documents that said he would have it, the repairs completed, and be able to rent that unit. Because it, you know, I mean, money will fix anything, I guess. But he said he would have that fixed by January 1, 2018. Hadn't touched it. So there's some material stacked in it. Looked like they might have some plywood in it, but, you know, they've not done anything. And then the other unit burned in August of '17 is the history on it. But it had a history, just like the other one, of being dilapidated, poorly taken care of, such. So there, he's not doing anything. They just, they need to be cleaned up and taken on. And he's got several tenants in the other units. So there's probably one more on that site that's questionable. But otherwise, the other four or five that are there are occupied. And he has fixed a little bit. So, but these few are pretty much gone, you know.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike, or for the attorney?
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Do we have any other items from the city manager? City attorney? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
We are adjourned.